We need to have an athletic committee meeting. So we need to have an athletic committee meeting.
All right, we got one minute thirty seconds.
Yeah, you know, if you had me here, I'd be about to have something. Was it six fifty-nine? Let me try see if I can get on here now.
We're thinking of like the day one. We're thinking of like the day one.
I know why. You want to do black.
Yeah, I'll change that.
And it's hard, it's difficult to find maybe.
I agree.
I buy baby peace.
Stop playing.
Certification of executive meeting. Whereas the Brunswick County School Board has convened executive meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Brunswick County School Board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brunswick County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters that were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, and considered by the Brunswick County School Board. Those in favor, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay.
Yea.
Meeting has been certified. Ms. Clary, could you please take a roll call attendance?
Mrs. Seward?
Present.
Mr. Warwick?
Here.
Dr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. McMillan?
Present.
Mr. Perrier?
Present.
All right, we'd like to thank you all for coming out to, coming out and joining us for our February official meeting. Just as a reminder, please turn off any cell phones, any electronic devices, watches, whatever, because we don't want you to miss anything that important that may be said in the meeting. And again, we greatly thank you for your participation. We will move along to the approval of the agenda. Our board members have had a time and an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there any discussion for the agenda?
Madam Chair, if it would be okay with the board, I'd like to eliminate item Q, meals for school board meeting from the agenda.
There is a motion that we eliminate item Q, meals for school board members. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been heard and second, motion is second. All in favor, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Yea. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Warwick. All right.
We still have to prove the agenda.
We need to approve the agenda.
With the change.
The approval. Thank you, Ms. Perrier. Yes, we will go back to the approval of the agenda with the exception of item Q, meals for school board members.
You need, you need a motion?
Is there a motion? Yes.
Madam Chair, I do make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of Q.
A second.
All right, it's been motioned properly second. All in favor, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries, agenda has been approved. I'm so excited to get to this treat under C, but we'll have Mr. Julius Chavis, a fourth grader for Red Oak Sturgeon, to come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which we will have a moment of silence. Will we all stand, those who are able to?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Job well done.
Moment of silence?
Yes, please carry on. Moment of silence.
Standing for the moment of silence. Things happening at Red Oak Sturgeon Elementary School. Things happening at Red Oak Sturgeon Elementary School. Most students have shown growth in their star math and their star reading and their vowels data. Red Oak Sturgeon is an anchor school for Zern and our data is used at the VDOE meetings to show usage and growth in math. The Virginia Department of Education came to our school on Friday, February seventh because according to the new accountability model, Red Oak Sturgeon is one of the best schools in Virginia.
Yay!
Every morning during the announcements, Ms. Finney says or sings the following statement. In case nobody told you today, you're special. In case nobody made you believe, you're special. In case nobody told you today, you're special. In case nobody made you believe, you're special. This month is School Board Appreciation Month and the theme is Champions of Opportunity. Advocates of, for excellence in honor of School Board Appreciation Month, Red Oak Sturgeon has a gift for you all. Thank you for being advocates of excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Julius.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I get one too? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And believe in yourself.
Oh, everybody, sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great job, young man.
Let's give Julius and his little helper a hand. I think we can all agree that we can adjourn the meeting and we'll all be happy.
Yes.
I don't think it's an official motion. But Julius, you're definitely right and Ms. Jones Finney has definitely said, well, you are special, such as all these kids in BCPS. Thank you again, Julius. Well done.
Good job, good job.
Moving right along. We're next up, we'll have superintendent's comments.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I recognize that we have a very lengthy agenda, so I'm going to move into recognitions, but before I have Dr. Thornhill come up with the student of the month, I saw Trayvon Jones here in the audience and I would like to see if he could come forward. He's here to present tonight, but I wanted to share something about Trayvon. So on January tenth, I received a letter and it's basically saying, on behalf of the Virginia Department of Education, I'm pleased to inform you that Trayvon Jones has been selected as one of Virginia's nominees for the two thousand twenty-five U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. His exceptional accomplishments earned him this prestigious recognition and is one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. The program was established by President Lyndon B. Johnson in nineteen sixty-four to celebrate students who demonstrate outstanding scholarship, leadership, and dedication to their education. Each year, up to one hundred sixty-one students nationwide are selected based on academic achievements, leadership qualities, and contributions to their communities. His nomination reflects his exceptional talents and accomplishments. So he would, he would, I'm sure you received the letter, the invitation, perfect, to apply to U.S. Department of Education in late January and those selected scholars will be notified in May of two thousand twenty-five. So we definitely just wanted to recognize him and he'll be here tonight.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
And you'll see him shortly presenting to you all as well. All right, Dr. Thornhill?
Unfortunately, Dr. Majette, out of season of the month, she is out sick today.
Okay. Perfect, so we'll have double for March, sounds good. All right, and at this time, I'll have Mrs. Pearson come forward with some spotlights for the month and appreciation, recognitions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Chair, Mrs. Seward, Vice Chair, Mr. Warwick, board members, Dr. Majette, and the greater Brunswick community, it is my pleasure to present the January Employee of the Month coming from Brunswick High School. Our first employee of the month is our certified employee of the month and that individual is Ms. Tanika Hilton. Ms. Hilton, could you please join me up front? Ms. Hilton is an exceptional educator whose passion for mathematics and unwavering dedication to student success makes her such an invaluable asset to the school. She encourages her students to reach their full potential. With an innovative approach to teaching, Ms. Hilton makes complex mathematical concepts accessible and engaging. Her ability to break down difficult topics, incorporate real-world applications, and adapt lessons to meet diverse needs of her students' learning has significantly improved her students' comprehension and confidence in math. Beyond academics, she fosters a positive and supportive classroom environment where students feel encouraged to ask questions, take risks, and develop a genuine love for learning. Collaboration is one of her many strengths as she works active, actively with the colleagues to enhance curriculum development, share effective teaching strategies, and support professional development. It is my honor to present Ms. Hilton as the certified employee of the month for Brunswick High School. Next, we have our classified employee of the month, Mrs. Albertina Drumgo. Ms. Drumgo, can you join me up front, please? As the bookkeeper, she consistently demonstrates exceptional dedication and professionalism in managing school business and ensuring smooth financial operations. Ms. Drumgo always exhibits a positive attitude and her values and dedication truly make her an asset to our school. Beyond her normal tasks, she is always willing to go the extra mile, assisting staff with concerns, ensuring timely reimbursements, and working collaboratively with administration and faculty. Brunswick High School seriously thanks Ms. Albertina Drumgo for her hard work and her dedication. Her professionalism and commitment to excellence makes, makes a lasting impact on our school community. Congratulations, Ms. Drumgo.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next up, we will have our board recognition presentations. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes February as School Board Appreciation Month, a time to acknowledge the service of our school board members. This annual observance is a time to salute the work of those school board members and celebrate public education. Julius Chavis came up recently and he already gave the theme, so I definitely could not undo that, but I will share that in addition to that theme, it highlights the efforts made by school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation. Their role in overseeing policies and budget, along with supporting educational programs, will have a lasting impact on students, families, and staff. While challenges always remain, it is important to recognize that the time and effort they dedicate to improving education and student outcomes should not be overlooked. Please join me in recognizing our school board members for their service to Brunswick County Public Schools and their contributions to our students' educational journey. At this time, I will present each school board member with a certificate of appreciation. In addition, each school board member, you have a gift that is placed before you in a bag in which you have been adopted by one of our five amazing schools.
Thank you.
First, I have Ms. Tracy Seward.
Mr. Roy Warwick.
Thank you.
Ms. Monica McMillan.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Elizabeth Burns.
Thank you, thank you.
And Ms. Timothy Purk.
Thank you.
In addition to School Board Appreciation Month, the Virginia School Board Association also recognizes February seventeenth through the twenty-first as School Board Clerk Appreciation Month. We would like to recognize our school board clerk, Ms. Amy Clary, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Shirley Newchurch, for their dedicated service. Their attention to detail, organization, and support behind the scenes ensure that our school board meetings and operations run smoothly. I never would have imagined, being in human resources, how closely I would be impacted by school board clerk, but I appreciate all the work that you do, as well as Ms. Newchurch, to help make our board more means run efficiently. Your hard work goes unnoticed and transparency and efficiency really make us grateful to have you and your contributions to Brunswick County Public Schools. Ms. Newchurch received her gift this morning, but this is yours. Thank you so much, Ms. Clary.
Thank you, Ms. Clary.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it is.
And that concludes my presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you again for the wonderful gifts and accolades. Thank you, Ms. Clary. We can't do without you, for sure. Next, we're going to take a brief intermission to have pictures and promise you, put us on the time, it won't be long, okay? DC, you on it?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Breen.
Just one. Oh, next part of your board's citizen comments.
Hmm?
Is it next part?
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Okay, back to me.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for y'all's time and patience. Next, we're gonna move right along to citizens' comments.
At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is allowed up to three minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation. It will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Mariah Lambie.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Mariah Lambie, and I'm the daughter of Dr. Rosemary Ann Lambie, a retired professor from VCU specializing in educational leadership. I have a ten-year-old child enrolled in the special education program at Red Oak Sturgeon Elementary who has an IEP. My child faces multiple disabilities, including deafness and hearing impairment, autism, and intellectual disability, and a range of health challenges. As a result, she requires specialized services such as speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, specialized reading and writing assistance, and ASL interpreting services. This is our first year navigating the educational system in this county, and I'm profoundly disappointed and troubled by the treatment of special needs children and their rightful entitlements. Since September, we have been advocating for the services my child is entitled to, yet we have not received a signed and agreed-upon IEP to this day. The justifications provided for the county's inability to deliver in-person services are absolutely unacceptable. Statements have been made to us such as, "We can't find anyone." "No one wants to work since COVID." And these are just some of the numerous excuses that we have heard. Only one job posting has been done, and it was not even in the right state. It was in Brunswick County, North Carolina. At the beginning of the year, one proposed solution that was sent to us from this county was to send my child to a deaf and blind school in Stoughton, Virginia, located two and a half hours away from her home, to avoid having to deal with these issues. We have been met with ridicule from a member of the school board, I won't say names, who asked, "Well, what do you want me to do about it?" She proceeded to laugh. As a concerned parent, I expect you to fulfill your responsibilities as a school board member and advocate for children with disabilities, ensuring that they receive the resources they are entitled to under Virginia law. If you are unable to affect change, I would ask that you please step aside and allow someone else to prioritize the needs of these children. I believe that this county lacks the fortitude to acknowledge its shortcomings in supporting our children with special needs. And each instance in which you deny these children their rightful services or attempt to manipulate evaluations constitutes as a failure of your responsibilities within the county. Your role in this county is to safeguard these children at all costs. However, I feel like you are neglecting the most vulnerable members of this county. It is essential to recognize that if daily Facebook posts can be made regarding this remote learning day packet, then it is equally feasible to post job listings on a daily basis for these services that are not being provided to these children. Parents, please pay close attention to this. We have now received our second set of packets for the remote learning day due to this inclement weather for this week. And according to this county, if these packets are not completed and signed and sent back with your child, your child will be marked absent. Furthermore, if the county is unable to provide the necessary virtual services mandated in an IEP on these remote learning days, it raises questions about the justification for requiring other students to complete these packets.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. We appreciate your concerns.
Ms. Seward, no one else signed up to speak?
All right. I'll move along to the Brunswick 4-H update from Ms. Michaela Walton and Trayvon Jones.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Um, my name is Malika Walton. I'm the 4-H agent here in Brunswick County. Um, in a few, few short months, I'll be entering my fifth year as the 4-H agent, and I'm just super excited to be here. Every time I get an opportunity to speak in front of someone, I say that I am truly blessed to be here in Brunswick County. Um, Brunswick County was my, my third interview to be a 4-H agent, so third time's a charm, right?
Right.
Um, so, yes. And to the school board, um, we are very appreciative of the, the partnership with Brunswick 4-H. Um, without the partnership, uh, really, I don't know where our program would be. Okay, next slide. Okay. Um, so this first slide, uh, and I'm gonna be brief. Um, I just wanna talk a little bit about our in-school enrichment. So, in-school enrichment is a youth development program that provides hands-on learning experiences for students. So, what I do is, I go into schools, and a lot of the time, it's tailored toward their SOL. So, whatever they're working on at that moment, um, I will look at, um, our curriculum, which a lot of it is through Virginia Tech. We also, um, got curriculum through Virginia State and some other land-grant universities. But I look to see what curriculum is out there tailored toward the, um, SOL. And a lot of the time, it's hands-on, 'cause we learn by doing. Um, and I try to make it fun. Um, that's how I learn as well, doing hands-on activities. Um, so, and then, I've been in kindergarten, uh, fourth grade, fifth grade, so pretty much whichever teacher will allow me to come in, I go in. Um, it is kinda tough being, you know, just one agent. Uh, I do the best that I can. Um, each year, it's something different. Um, so, yeah. I very thoroughly enjoy the in-school. Um, I've been lucky here lately with, um, Trayvon here having early release, and he just, oh, pop in by the office, "I'm coming with you," um, to Mary Ann Powleton. So, I'm very thankful to have that assistance, and he likes being there with the kids. And, you know, I get tickled when the kids say, you know, "Hey, Mr. Trayvon." So, you know, the respect is there. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the biggest programs that we do is embryology, and embryology is a program that helps youth learn about embryonic development and the life cycle through the process of hatching of a chick. Um, so what I do is, I take the incubators, I put them in the schools with the, um, teachers. I give the teachers a brief rundown on how things go. Um, usually, they're the ones hatching the chicks. I will hatch maybe a few ducks in my office and then bring them with me into school. Takes, um, about twenty-one days to hatch the baby chicks. And, well, um, I know at Tatero, I believe, um, it was Ms. Jones' first time, um, doing embryology. And so, I got tickled just, you know, watching her through the whole process. And we've done it, um, at Mary Ann Powleton and Red Oak Sturgeon. So, I thoroughly enjoy embryology. I never did it, um, when I came up in 4-H, but it's fun just watching the kids, um, learn about the different process. They can see when we candle the egg, and I showed them the little embryos. And of course, you know, everybody loves it when the baby chicks hatch. And luckily, we have been able to find homes for all the, um, bunches. Um, I'd be trying to put them off on some of the teachers, but they're just like, "No, no." But, um, yes, it's one of our biggest, um, projects. And Virginia Tech, um, did give us the go-ahead last week that we can move forward with embryology again this year. Um, I just gotta watch the flocks that, um, I get the eggs from, so teachers be on the lookout. Next slide, please. Um, so one of the, uh, another program that we do, um, in Virginia 4-H is 4-H Day at Capital. Um, and that provides an opportunity for youth, specifically teens, to learn about governmental procedures, um, and emphasizes the importance of citizen involvement in the governmental process. Um, so the pictures up there was actually 4-H Day at Capital last year, and that's where we also learned that it's also Brunswick Stew Day. Um, so, we got lucky with the, um, board supervisors being up there, so the teens got to take a picture with them. Um, the governor actually came around the corner, and he said, "Who's here from Brunswick?" So, of course, you know, all the teens, you know, they got excited and rowdy. He talked about the Brunswick Stew and got to take a picture with our teens, and then we took them to the tent. Um, this year was, um, a bit different because of the weather and everything, uh, but we still had a little bit of representation up there at 4-H Day at Capital. Okay, um, and this right here, uh, so we do do a lot of specialty camps, um, as well. This is our Winter in the Woods camp. Back in the day, it was called Christmas Camp. But, um, it's a specialty camp that held, that's held at Holiday Lake, and is designed to offer, um, unique outdoor adventures. Um, and there's a lot of, like, winter-type activities. So, as you can see, um, twenty-twenty-two, we had a small little group. Uh, we was able to get them up there, and I think one van, may have been two. Um, in twenty-twenty-three, I remember, we had to, um, I had to find three vans, uh, to get everybody up there. And then, um, last year in twenty-twenty-four, I was receiving all these phone calls. I was in Walmart. I took the corner, hit come a grandma. "Hey, y'all got anything coming up?" And so, I'm just like, "Well, I gotta bite the bullet. Let me see, you know, right to the school board, see if I can get a bus." And, well, as you can see, in twenty-twenty-four, um, we had a bus full. Holiday Lake was so excited to see a bus come in for the specialty camp. They've never seen a bus come in for the specialty camp. So, we had the most there that weekend, so.
Awesome.
Awesome. Next, please. Um, and this is our junior 4-H camp. Trayvon and, uh, both are gonna tackle this. Um, I actually gave a presentation today at Mary Ann Powleton, because, of course, I'm known as the, the camp lady. But junior 4-H camp, you know, that's our overnight summer camp, held, um, held at Holiday Lake as well. It's Monday through Friday camp. It's overnight. We have been very thankful, again, with the partnership from the, uh, school board, um, with the buses. We take three buses up there, a luggage bus, a male bus, and a female bus. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, near probably twenty-sixth, I'm probably gonna exit another bus. But, um, the, the need is there. There are so many parents that, you know, when it's camp open up, when it's camp coming, opening up, and, you know, youth around here, that's, camp is where they need to be at. And I'm a firm believer that every youth should be able to participate in camp, um, at least one time to see if it's your thing, 'cause we do have youth that go there. "Oh, no, Ms. Malika, I need AC. I need this. I need that." So, I'm just like, "It's okay. You tried it. You tried it." Um, so, I love 4-H camp. I've never missed, uh, a year 4-H camp since I was nine. Um, so I always volunteered when I aged out and everything. But this is, this is really what puts Brunswick County on the map. Even when I, you know, go out of the county to my conferences and stuff like that, they'd be like, "Malika, we see the numbers that you take in the camp." So, and I'm gonna turn everything over to Trayvon.
So, I've been going to camp since I was eligible to go, so nine years old. And I've only missed two years, and that was due to COVID and me not knowing that camp was even going on. But after those, after those past two years, I've been going to camp ever since. I'm a teen lead, and I do plenty of more teen leader stuff, as in the Ignite your Spark Camp and Cloverbud Camp. However, this camp I've just been going to since, ever since I was nine. So, it's always been a special place in me to, like, go to this camp. And I really hope that I can go this summer, but it just depends on cer- certain cir- circum- circumstances. And, yeah. Go to the next slide. So, again, I'm a Central District Ambassador on the Virginia 4-H Cabinet. Our main goal is to outreach across Virginia. However, we, um, the Central District Ambassador, pardon me, in the Central District, so Brunswick, Mecklenburg, Nodaway, um, Lynchburg, and in the Central District. Um, I'm a teen counselor. I've been to plenty of national conferences. I've been to Ignite by 4-H National Conference. In November, I went to National Congress. And I plan to go to Ignite by 4-H again, and I will be, um, teaching a workshop. And so, we'll be teaching how we, how me and other STEM ambassadors made a camp called the Ignite your Spark Camp. It was a day camp that was produced to raise, to raise, um, test score, science test scores in our area. And so, that's where the STEM ambassador part come in. As a STEM ambassador, we were made to, we were, we were chosen to make a camp. And so, in this upcoming June, beginning of June, we'll be also hosting a camp again. At this camp, we, um, we had a bus, and we had, we brought them to the science, the Science Museum in Richmond. Uh, that was the last day of camp. But on the previous days, me and Bron- Brunswick County student, Brunswick County Public School students and Brunswick Academy students, we all decided to come together and teach these kids them. We, we taught balloon cars. We taught them how to make ooblick. I thought plenty of kids were like, know how to make the ooblick, and that wouldn't be so shocking to them. However, plenty of kids, they didn't know how. So, I taught them how to make ooblick. We taught them how to do candle in a jar, which is just a simple project, as in having a candle and a little metal plate, and just inserting the, inserting something over top of it to make it explode. And we also had elephant toothpaste, and it's just simple projects that you can learn from and learn all the science and, um, engineering and math from. I also recently went to National Congress. Um, you, when you go to these national conferences, you'll see that you're kind, I'm a minority, and it's just like, you're gonna, you're gonna see that. And so, it's definitely nice to have, just to have it know that I'm a minority. I'm a black student. I can lead, and, you know, it's just more than just white leaders in this world. Um, I also did the Smithsonian Stories 4-H History Project. We interviewed multiple people, and we also interviewed the Superincended. And that project was definitely interesting to know. We taught, where we go? What we do? Our project was over the, um, the new schools in our area and how, and how the change in interfaces of it. And so, we talked about Brunswick County and Mecklenburg County. And that was a great project. That was a project that we did with the Central District ambassadors, me, um, Aviana, Aviana, Jolene, Trinity, and we're there from Mecklenburg County. And we also had some other people, um, Simone Bruce and Kaylee High from Brunswick County. Um, I also, last year, was a part of the Brunswick Teen Club, and I was, I'm now the past president. However, this year, Simone Bruce is the president. And I was able to just lead the group and stuff. So, one of the main things I kinda did was the Ignite by, Ignite your Spark Camp, and that was an amazing thing, so I could just lead the group and, you know, order supplies, just organize the camp, schedule, make sure the scheduling was right. And even I, I was able to cook food for the camp, just to decrease the cost, and I have to order out. Go to the next slide. Um, for Virginia 4-H State Congress, it's something that is ran by the Central District Camp, not Central District ambassadors, the Virginia 4-H Cabinet. And so, that includes the president, districts as in southwest, northeast, northwest, central, southeast, and plenty of more people also impact on Congress. Um, you'll see that me and Simone, in that last picture, last picture, we got accepted into the National Congress. We got the invitation to go. In the middle picture, that was the Brunswick Cluster. And then, in that last picture, that was twenty-twenty-three, and we all, that was the first year that Brunswick County, I could say, well, with Malika, that we all dressed up and we came out stepping. Um, we all, it was a shock, and we shocked the whole, um, campus out there. It's a overnight, I said overnight Congress. It's a overnight camp, not a camp. It's a overnight conference that's with a lot of teenagers from across Virginia. And, yeah. The next slide. Um, again, with the teen club, it's a lot of different things. We have a lot of people coming from Brunswick County that's doing things statewide. So, we have the Healthy Living Summit, in which you basically promote healthy living across Virginia. Um, you have the Teen Summit, so that's equity, inclusion, um, diversity, and stuff like that. And then, you also have me, a Central District Ambassador on the Virginia 4-H Cabinet. And so, that, all these things make you promote 4-H and make sure that you're promoting a positive impact on life. And, yeah. We also have students on the Teen Leadership Council at the Holiday Lake Center, in which we also camp there, so they basically have a, a part in what we do at camp and what's going on at camp. One of the main things that they're talking about now is, how are the themes going to happen at camp? So, what you think we're gonna do? Are we gonna do cartoons? Are we gonna do R&B music, country, whatever, and stuff like that? Go to the next slide. And these are pictures of what we have done. We was at the Brunswick Youth Football League. This is when we went to VSU. I think that was after an, an event that they had went to. Um, this was us giving, um, Dr. Thornhill a certificate. Um, this is us after, in that picture right there with the purple and blue, uh, we gave, we all came from the Central District Contest. Um, that was in that white shirt where we're all just standing together. That was the, um, the color run at Virginia 4-H State Congress. And in the top picture on the right, that was us giving out candy at the, um, Brunswick Trunk or Tree.
Awesome. Busy, busy.
Yes. And this is our gift to you, since it's the.
School board, Mark. And these are just pants, Virginia 4-H pants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't had one in years.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Well done.
Yeah.
And thank you all for listening.
And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Amazing job. Um, you're busy. You are very, very busy. But in being busy, you have represented, and you continue to rep- represent Brunswick County very well. Thank you, thank you. And I'm, I'm so grateful for the opportunities that 4-H, um, lends our kids in this community. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Can't say it enough. And thank you to the community for supporting it, so.
Right. And I too wanna believe, I believe in giving people their flowers when they do. And I remember when Ms. Walton first came to the county, and she was introduced as the new Jinx Baney. You know, but one thing I can definitely say.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. And I can definitely say that even now, you have kind of, your leadership, you're leaving your own legacy and your own impact here in this county. To see where you have taken this program and how you have grown it, again, that's kudos to your leadership. To see Mr. Jones, as he has matriculated through the program as well, and to see the individuals who are still, the alumni, that still wants to give back. I think that's the commitment to both Ms., um, Ms. Baney's leadership, but also your leadership in keeping, um, students engaged. So, thank you so much for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thanks again. Good stuff, good stuff. Um, next, we're going to move right along to our instructional report. Dr. Hampton?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Seward, Board Chair, Mr. Warwick, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Majette, Community Members, and for all those who are assembled. I am Victoria Hampton, and I have the distinct pleasure of sharing the overview of our instructional processes, um, that are going to be planned over the next coming months as we prepare to close out the school year. With the many transitions that are underway at the state level, including the, um, pending finalization of the new accountability model, and given the significant gains that have been made here in Brunswick, we felt that it was essential to highlight those instructional processes that have given us those improvements. Moreover, we must focus on what needs to be sustained as well as enhanced through professional development, as well as effective practices moving forward. This evening, we are going to delve into our instructional practices on the elementary level. Next month, in March, we will move to, we'll move the focus to the secondary level. From April through May, we will, our presentations will center around the transition for our middle school students, particularly if the school board does, um, support the proposal to close the middle school during tonight's meeting. Joining me tonight are, is a phenomenal instructional team, which is Ms. Bianca, who is our elementary instructional coach. We also have. We also have. We also have Mrs. Wesson, who is our secondary instructional coach. And lastly, we have Ms. Alston, who is our division reading specialist. Together, this group is the dynamic team of the instructional department. Without further ado, please allow me to present or welcome Ms. Bianca, as well as Ms. Alston, to share our elementary instructional processes. Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, I think all of the introductions have already been made, so we're gonna go ahead and proceed. I do wanna start by saying thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight and share our elementary instructional focus with you. As we um, are determined to focus on evidence-based practices and procedures to continue to support student academic achievement. And as Dr. Hampton already said, to make sure that we are able to sustain that achievement and growth that we have already made. Um, so we put together and what should be an entertaining slideshow for you guys this evening. Um, and without any further ado, we'll get started. So next slide, please.
Our strategic plan of alignment includes our mission. Within a safe and supportive environment, We will provide every student with a strong education that will enable them to be productive citizens Who are college and career ready and are able to compete in an ever-changing world. Our vision, educating students, inspiring success, and improving tomorrow. Goal one, academic excellence, multiple pathways and delivery formats to student success. Next slide, please.
So tonight, we hope to focus on our innovative instructional strategies and robust accountability measures That foster an environment where even our youngest students are able to be successful and learn. Um, we want to make sure that our focus is on lifelong learning and academic excellence. So that we are ensuring that we are highlighting the success of our kids, not only at the elementary level, But as they continue to move forward in their educational career through middle school and high school as well. Next slide, please.
Our elementary instructional focus includes curriculum alignment, accreditation and accountability, Instructional techniques, pedagogical practices, group instruction models, high-quality instructional materials, Data-driven instruction, the Virginia Literacy Act, and the B C P S Elementary Plan for Continued Success. Next slide, please.
Slide one is gonna focus on curriculum and alignment, new standards from the Virginia Department of Education, As well as the new accreditation and accountability model. As looking forward with curriculum and alignment, we have new standards this year that have been put out from the Virginia Department of Education And the areas of math as well as reading. So our students will be tested um, with new S O Ls this year. Twenty twenty-three for math, twenty twenty-four for English. Um, and we are committed to making sure that we are aligning everything that we do, the written, taught, and tested curriculum Based on those new standards and the parameters that have been given to us from the Virginia Department of Education. That is a hot link on the bottom of your screen in case you want to peruse those standards and get a better look at what twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four look like. We want to make sure that you guys have everything that you need, um, so that if you have any questions, we're able to answer them. Based on those new standards, we do have a new accreditation and accountability model this year. Um, our accreditation and accountability will label each of our schools as either distinguished, on track, Off-track, or needs intensive support. And that will be determined based on the areas of mastery, growth, and readiness. It is important to note this year that for the area of growth, even our students that have not been successful in the past, They will have the opportunity to show growth, but our students that have been successful in the past Will also be expected to make growth in order to get any points dropped within that growth bucket. So we want to make sure that we are, again, um, we want to make sure that we are sustaining but progressing forward. And just because we've been successful last year, or student A succeeded last year, I need student A to continue to grow this year and so, show growth, um, to ensure that we are maximizing Um, everything that we can provide for all of our students. Next slide, please. Some of our instructional techniques are obviously centered around our tiered instruction, our M T S S model. Um, we put academics and behavior together at the instructional level because both of those pieces impede one another. Um, if we have strong academics and a strong engagement, then we often have excellent behavior in students who are willing to go the extra mile. It can also go the opposite. If we have areas of classroom management that are extremely weak, Or there may be some gaps, then we see some gaps instructionally as well. So we tend to take the academics and the behavior, we marry those two together, and that allows us to provide our tier one, Our tier two, and our tier three supports. We also focus on the gradual release um, method of responsibility. I do it, we do it, you do it together, and then you do it alone. And what that simply means is that we encourage all of our educators to model first for their students. They, there has to be modeling and explicit instruction by teachers first. That's the I do it part. The we do it part is where, as educators, we work with our students. So we get in there, we work with them together. So I am a team with the kids, the kids and I are working together to make sure that we're being successful. The you do it together part is where we allow our students the opportunity to collaborate and work with one another. Peer-to-peer instruction is essential, especially at the elementary level, because our students can learn sometimes more from one another Than they can from the educator that's standing in front of them. And then, of course, we have the you do it alone, that's that independent practice, that final piece, which is usually some type of assessment piece That allows us to continue to gather that data we need to make effective instructional decisions moving forward. Next slide, please. Instructional strategies and techniques through scientific investigation. So cool, right? So, and that's what I was hearing you to say, and I thought, thank you, Mr. Mays, for not moving forward. In this particular video, um, they were doing, of course, hands-on learning through science. And so they had prisms and using flashlights with the lights off in the classroom. They were using the prisms and the flashlights in order to show the visible light spectrum or the rainbow, and they were using it on the white paper. And depending, of course, the distance between the flashlight and the prism and how you hold the prism, That would determine um, what their rainbow looked like and the different lengths. And showing those wavelengths in order from shortest to longest, longest to shortest. Um, so that's uh, that's how we're using our labs, which by the way, that lab was brought to us through Discovery Education, Which is our science platform that we use, our high-quality instructional material. It allows for hands-on projects for every standard that we have. Um, learning in action, we all know that students learn the most by doing. And um, this was a perfect example of that. You could even hear the students saying, this is so cool. Um, because they like learning when they are actually involved in the learning process. So, yeah. Yes, ma'am. Next slide, please. So this slide is focused on our pedagogical practices, which is our effective classroom structure that we've developed here in Brunswick County. Our instructional model that we encourage across all academic areas, um, which focuses on having that daily spiral review. We have to keep that old information fresh while our students learn new information. So we can never have a teach it and forget it kind of day. That is not the way it works. So we have to keep everything rolling and moving so that our students always have all of that content that they previously learned Still in their knowledge, still being applied, and applying it to new knowledge every single day. Um, we start with always an anticipatory set, so we need something to hook the students and, you know, get them in there and get them ready and engaged. Because when they're engaged, that's when we get the best bang for our buck. Um, we also focus on our whole group instruction, as well as our station rotations. And a flexible small group instruction that is based on student data. So um, our decisions that we make are always gonna be data-driven decisions. Um, and we'll talk about that a little bit as we go forward. We do provide opportunities, again, for that independent practice, as well as our formative daily assessments, our weekly summative assessments, And our benchmark assessments, which again, allow us that opportunity to really go through that quantitative data And to disaggregate it and triangulate it, because we can never use one assessment piece. We have to have multiple assessment pieces in order to make effective decisions for all of our students moving forward. And so this is um, our model that we use daily across all core academic areas. Next slide, please. This is gonna be spiral review, effective classroom structure.
So who will tell me first? Go in a sign. What did you use? You multiply first, what did you multiply? Five dollars and twelve cents times two. And after that, is that the answer? What did you do afterwards? So I see that your answer will be ten dollars and twenty-four cents, right? And then after that? You subtract what? Very good. Twenty dollars, take away what? Ten dollars and twenty-four cents, which gives you the answer, which is what? Nine dollars and seventy-six. Who used the same way as Nasan did? Okay, very good. Now for those who use different methods, you can tell me. How about hope? How did you solve it, Hope? So you added five dollars and twelve cents together. And afterwards, I saw it, it's ten dollars and twenty-four cents. Afterwards? Okay, very good. So you take away, you take it away from twenty dollars and you still get the same, you still get the same answer.
And so in this video, I wanted to make sure that um, you were noticing that she was doing a spiral review or a question of the day of Content and information that had already been covered previously in a lesson. But she was also focusing on differentiation and multiple methods, which is why she was calling on one student to say, hey, how did you do this? And then another student had the opportunity to say, hey, I learned it in a different way. So through those spiral reviews and those effective questions of the day, it allows for multiple methods, it allows for differentiation, And it allows our students to learn based on their own learning modalities and what works best for them. You will also notice the infusion of technology there through the Desmos calculator, using the board as well as the Chromebooks at the same time. Next slide, please. This slide is focused on our inclusion. This is group um, instruction models. So Brunswick County Public Schools, especially at the elementary level, we do have several models that we can use where our exceptional education teachers Work right alongside in a collaborative setting with our um, regular education teachers. And they have different opportunities. We can have one teach, one assist, we can have team teaching, we can have parallel teaching. The one we tend to focus on the most, especially at the elementary level, is the station teaching. Because again, that allows different things to be taught at different levels based on student data Um, in that whole group classroom setting. And it also allows the ex, the exceptional education teacher and the regular education teacher To, to be able to move around the classroom and hit the specific needs and targeted needs of those students through explicit instruction. Next slide, please. This is going to be tier one core instruction, interactive, student-centered instruction.
You matter. You absolutely matter to me, okay? I'm so glad that each and every one of you decided to come in. Math time. What is math time? All right, so don't draw my denominator. I want you to draw your denominator. So if you have thirteen in your bag, I want you to draw thirteen circles. If you have fifteen in your bag, you need to draw fifteen circles. If you have eleven Skittles, you need to draw eleven. Do that now. We're on this page, right?
What was your guess? Twelve? Was it actually twelve?
No, mine was five.
Yours was five? Can you tell me a little bit about what you learned about, with the Skittles activity? Okay.
And then we had to match the um, pictures on the um, paper.
Okay, can you show me what you have there? Awesome. And what was your numerator? Okay. Okay, and what about your denominator?
And we had to co, we had to count all of the um, count all of the All the circles together. And then we had to, and then we had to write.
Okay, did you enjoy this activity? You did? Okay, thank you so much.
And so as this video is wrapping up, we are hoping that you guys were able to obviously notice the V T S S positive affirmations That were put in place at the beginning, because all of our students come to school every day at the elementary level, knowing that they are loved and appreciated. Um, because sometimes for some of our kids, that's where all they get. And so we want to make sure that they feel that from us each and every day. We also wanted you to notice um, the songs and the student engagement, um, learning through hands-on. The kids were having relevancy and math relevancy through a Skittles activity where they were taking those Skittles and they were putting them into fractions. And it's like the true essence of the C R A model. So them taking something concrete and doing that hands-on And being able to go from that hands-on to that representational piece. And eventually where that will lead them is to abstractly just having that knowledge And being able to apply it to any new learning situation that comes their way. So um, we wanted to make sure that we shared that with you guys. And I did wanna mention to Dr. Burns, we talked about um, one of the things that With the new math standards, we are going towards critical thinking and hands-on learning and making those um, different Um, connections and having that justification and reasoning. And so seeing activities like this is really what brings that learning alive and brings those opportunities alive for our students in the classroom. Next slide, please. So this year, along with the new standards, um, the Virginia Department of Education has also started to implement high-quality instructional materials. We call them H Q I M's, um, cause we pretty much have an acronym for everything, um, and that's just the way it works. But high-quality instructional materials basically house everything that an educator would need in order to meet the needs of all of the students. So, so there are differentiation needs there, there are different strategies there, there's opportunities for professional development. There's assessment, that, I mean, it is chock full of different pieces that any teacher would be able to need. If you were to put it in, in a novice teacher's hand, they would be able to take this resource and they would be able to deliver an effective lesson. The ones that we have in place at this time are Savis and Vision, which is math, that will be changing soon As um, the Department of Education is working on a new adopted list. We have H M H Into Reading, we have um, Virginia Literacy Partnerships, or V L P. The Virginia Department of Education Instructional Materials, Gallup aid is our history. The Creative Curriculum is our early learning curriculum for our preschool babies. I X L focuses on all of our core academic areas, and then of course, Discovery Education is science. Although it is phenomenal for um, loads of other things as well. I also linked in here, um, one of the things that we talked about, where um, Ms. Stewart, were the five Cs. And I wanted you guys to, to know that in each of these high-quality instructional materials, those five Cs are included and they are embedded. And so we are focusing on critical thinking and communication and having those pieces embedded within the lessons that the students are learning. And so that is actually a hot link there as well with the Virginia five Cs, in case you wanted to do a little bit of background reading, you know, at night or whenever. You guys, I have the opportunity, it's there for you to look into that a little bit more, but it is a, a major focus on them. And like I said, the fact that it's embedded and those pieces are married together makes it seem like such a seamless uh, transition for our students. So we are appreciative of that part as far as H Q I M is, is considered. Next slide, please. Uh, our team definitely focuses on using, we call it D I M. Again, I, here I go with the acronyms. D I M is data-informed decision-making. And we talked earlier about quantitative data and how we gather all of our numbers, and we do that through all of the assessments. But we also wanna make sure that we get our qualitative data too. So we have conferences with our students, we have conferences with our teachers, we get feedback, we send surveys. Because not everything, it's true that numbers normally don't lie, but sometimes there's a lot to be spoken for that we can't read for From a number. So we have to make sure that we're taking those quantitative pieces and those qualitative pieces and putting them together To make um, the best instructional decisions we can for all of our students. With that being said, as we make those instructional decisions, as we go beyond tier one and we get to tier two and tier three, We do have some improved um, intervention and supplemental programs that we already have in place. So for reading, we have Lexia Core Five, um, and that serves as our supplemental and an intervention piece. Zern is a supplemental and intervention piece for math. iXL is a supplemental and/or intervention, all academic areas. The ninety-five percent group for reading. HMH Math and Focus is used as a tier-two intervention. And then, of course, Spire is our tier-three intervention for our students that need some major help that are showing deficiencies in the area of phonics and phonemic awareness and things like that, which you guys will get a brief little showing of that as we continue to move on. Next slide, please. So this is tier one and tier two flexible small group instruction with Core. And so in this video, I'm actually going to talk as the video is moving. And you are going to see again the infusion of that technology. You're also going to see the infusion of station rotations and flexible grouping as the teachers are having face-to-face time with the students. And the students are working on a variety of activities at each station. You will see hands-on learning and manipulatives in the area of math. You are also seeing students working through those Lexia and iXL lessons there on the computer as well as Zern. And coming up in just a second, you're going to see even more student-centered work as you watch a teacher doing a little bit of work at the table with her students for face-to-face instruction. And so this is in the area of mathematics. And you can see that she has her small group there. And she is doing explicit instruction with them to make sure that they have retained the content that she's covering. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to my colleague and our division reading specialist, Ms. Jacqueline Austin.
Thank you, Ms. Bianco. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In April 2022, the General Assembly unanimously passed the Virginia Literacy Act into law. The Virginia Literacy Act aims to improve literacy across the state by implementing a comprehensive approach similar to how improving multiple areas of your health, like your diet, your exercise, and sleep. The VLA focuses on aligning various aspects of literacy education to ensure success, not addressing just one area in isolation. And so all stakeholders play a major role in the success of making multiple simultaneous changes with the support from the VDOE, with, through tools, resources, funding that spans across a multi-year effort. And so the VLA is structured around these six key areas grounded in science-based reading research and also evidence-based instructional materials and delivery where our students are, it's driving the sustainable improvements that our students need in literacy. In addition to that, we have support from the Reading League of Virginia, which is a national literacy organization whose mission is to bring awareness, understanding, and the use of evidence-based instruction. For the past two years, to the present, I've served as a board member on the Virginia chapter along with Dr. Emily Solari, UVA professor, and Delegate Conyers, who also championed the action for the VLA becoming a law. And this year, we're offering free membership. We have six hundred plus members. And it's growing. So we're committed to ensuring literacy across the state of Virginia, here in Brunswick County and beyond. And you do see there's a link there to the Virginia Literacy Act on your screen for further information. Also, how does this impact our division? Districts will ensure that K through eight teachers have and use evidence-based literacy curriculum. We are providing, of course, skilled reading specialists, as you can see, for every five hundred and fifty students, grades K through two. And then, coming forward in the fall of 2025, 26, our grades four, six through eight will need an additional reading specialist for every eleven hundred students. And also included in that, districts must create and implement a comprehensive literacy plan with professional development and evidence-based literacy instruction. Ongoing support is provided through the Virginia Literacy Partnerships, of which Ms. Bianco mentioned earlier. And this will also enhance the work of the teachers, providing ongoing resources, partnership with them. They aim to work with the teachers as, not just our in-service teachers, but those teachers that will, pre-service teachers, providing that professional development. And so this summer, we have to update our plan with a biennial plan that will include supplemental and intervention programs for grades six through eight. Next slide, please. How does this impact teachers? Again, it focuses on evidence-based literacy curriculum throughout the entire literacy block. Teachers will assess the student learning using the approved literacy screener, which is our VOWS screener. It used to be POWS, now it's VOWS. And basically what it does, it has sub-test skills that our students are assessed on, which targets their instruction individually, which helps provide the teachers with information to develop student reading plans. The student reading plans are developed with the high-risk students on the VOWS screener. And so those plans are looked at. The data is disaggregated, as you heard Ms. Bianco share earlier. We disaggregate that data and we specifically target the individual needs of those students with that plan. Goals are made, objectives. Two goals, we've decided as a division to focus on two goals per student with the high-risk needs. And we look at those goals. We go back and refine those goals and target the instruction to what they need. Teachers will continue to use that data to inform both whole group and individualized instruction and intervention. You heard Ms. Bianco mention the flexible small groups. That is something that we are developing now because it's new to our teachers. We're used to static grouping, but with literacy in particularly, we need to develop those flexible small groups to target those specific needs. Next slide, please. So how does this impact the processes and supports for our teachers? We are implementing a layered approach to instruction. So Core, of course, with Core, you have the intervention plan and the targeted flexible groups. All of that is done in Core along with Lexia, which is a part of Core. And then the second layer is intervention where we have our tutors that will provide even the plans from Lexia. Say a student has a targeted need in Lexia, then that plan will be presented to the tutor and they will implement that plan. And all of those targeted areas have to align with whatever the goals are for that student who has the student reading plan. And then the third layer is intensive, where the students receive an increase in intensity. This could be in the form of more frequency where maybe the student was receiving four days a week with ten to fifteen minutes. They may need five days a week. Or they, maybe we've monitored progress for two weeks. We may need to increase that to four weeks. So this is the layered approach. And within that, we're examining the VOWS data. We are making that data decision-making process. The teachers have a tool of which I created for them to document their progress. They're embedding a narrative that updates that progress based on that specific need, developing those student reading plans of which we're hoping that we get a system that will house them because it is a tedious process. Targeting supports for teachers through modeling, lesson delivery. Again, goals and objectives for the student reading plans, implementing that progress monitoring tool through the resources that we have through VDOE, like the VLP protocols. VOWS has some progress monitoring tools that the teachers can also use that gives them that weekly immediate feedback so they can go in and target those specific needs. And then we have the progress monitoring data intervention cycles where I'm meeting with them, Ms. Bianco is meeting with them. We do PLCs, advanced tiers meeting, so that we can delve even deeper into the root cause of what's happening. Especially if we say, for example, have a student who may have been high-risk in the fall and now they're high-risk in mid-year. So there's something going on with that student that, and they may have made minimal progress. But we still need to dig a little deeper into what's actually going on. And I'll turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Bianco. This time, thank you.
Next slide, please, Mr. May. So this is going to be evidence of tier one and two, Lexia Core Five, flexible small group, iXL, and instruction within Core. In this video, you're going to see and witness that small group flexible instruction as well as the use of KidLips. You are going to see the students on Lexia, iXL, again, infusing that technology into our core instruction and into our tier-two and tier-three instruction as well. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were able to document that for you guys moving forward tonight. Next slide, please. So this is our elementary plan for continued success. And this will be the fastest part, I promise. I promise, because you know, I'm the talker, so I love to talk. But I do want to, I do want to point out the graphic that's at the top that says comfort zone. And then you see the other circle that says where the magic happens. And at the elementary level, that's where our push is. It is always to push ourselves outside of our comfort zone because that is where the magic happens. If we only give our students one way to do things, then they're never going to step out of that circle to explore and to learn and be able to apply new things. So I really wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. And now I'm going to mosey along and continue. Mr. May's, next slide, please. All right, so we do definitely want to continue to strengthen our professional development and collaboration. We want to make sure that we continue ongoing PD, which we always do. But we want to make sure that it's more targeted to the specific needs of our teachers, especially with all of the changes that are coming down from the Department of Education. We want to enhance our coaching and mentoring programs within the schools and enhance our PLC meetings to be more collaborative. We also want to include that CTE piece in our professional development for our elementary students because we want to go ahead and start offering them some of those opportunities that they need to help prepare them as they venture off into secondary. And so we can do that through some of our opportunities that we have in-house, through guidance and our physical education teachers. But we also have opportunities when we do things like career fairs and we bring those types of things into our buildings at the elementary level that allows our students to explore. Next slide, please. As we continue to move forward, one of the things that we want to make sure we continue to focus on is that DITM process because as we continue to focus on that data, whether it's quantitative or whether it's qualitative, that is what is going to allow us to continue to sustain and expand our instructional strategies and differentiation. Again, we cannot remain stagnant. We have to go with the motion of the ocean. So as the DOE moves, we need to move with them and use that data to expand our horizons as well. Next slide, please. We definitely want to make sure that we continue to evaluate our instructional tools and our strategies. If we don't evaluate ourselves, then we don't have room for growth. So that is very important to make sure that we have that self-review and self-reflection process in there. And that we're also seeking the feedback from our teachers and our students and our parents so that we can move forward productively. We also are interested in integrating any new technologies that we can and obviously working with the technology department because there's all these new platforms out there that can give us real-time data and that can bring learning to life even more than it already does in Brunswick County Public Schools. So we look forward to that collaboration with the Department of Technology. Next slide, please. This is Spire, our tier-three intervention, systematic and explicit.
Now, these are our consonant teams, all right? So, again, we're going to say what the letters are. What's the sound? What's the key word? Ready? All right. What is the letters?
T-T-A.
What is the sound? And what is this first word?
N-N.
What is the letters?
T-T-A.
What are the letters? Very good. What is the sound? And what is the word?
S-E.
Very good. What are the letters?
W-W-A.
What is the sound?
W.
Very good. And what's the word?
Whisk.
Whisk. Nice. Now, you guys have been doing so well. We are now introducing a new sound today, okay? So let's just first say, what are the letters?
A-A-G.
All right. And the sound is ang. Ang. Ang, can you say that?
Ang.
Ang. And our key word is?
Sang.
Sang, very good. Now, in reference to our consonant teams, why is it called the consonant team?
Because it's two, um, two letters.
There are two letters, but what kind of letters? They are together letters, but what are these two letters? They're not vowels. They're?
Consonants.
Consonants. Don't get that confused with continents. That's a large landmass. All right, and then this one is a welded team. Okay, so we have consonant teams and welded team. Now, I see two consonants. But what's in front of it?
A vowel.
A vowel. That's what changes this, all right? All right, let's go ahead and get started. Excellent. Up.
U-U. U. U.
Bravo. And our last one, bed.
E-E. E. Bed.
All right, now I'm introducing a new color. What color am I introducing?
Yellow.
Yellow. All right, and this is one of our welded teams, all right? So what are my three letters?
A-A-G.
A-A-G. Do you remember what sound that makes?
Ang.
Ang. Ang. And the word is sang. So are you ready?
Yes. A-A-G. Ang.
And what is our word?
Sang.
Sang. Excellent. God, you guys are doing a great job.
Awesome. And you guys just witnessed our tier-three intervention, which is Spire, that definitely focuses on that phonics and that those foundational pieces that our students need to be able to succeed in the area of literacy. Next slide, please. Our last couple of slides are just focusing on making sure that we continue our improvement and our feedback loops so that we can remain goal-oriented at the elementary level and make sure that we have that sustainability. Next slide, please. And in summary, we've pretty much already said this. I've talked a long time right now, so you guys can feel free to read that again at your, at your own, at your own, uh?
Leisure.
Leisure, when you're ready. It's there for you. And next slide? And so we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
We got put off by weather twice for this. And I've been chomping at the bit to get up here and to get this done. So I really want to say thank you guys so much for allowing us to continue to do what we do and how much Brunswick County Public Schools means to us and our kiddos. We look forward to educating students, inspiring success, and improving tomorrow each and every day.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And before you all sit down, I definitely want to make a few comments. One of which, coming into this meeting, again, I had the opportunity to review the PowerPoint and everything else. And I think I told the chairwoman, hey, that's a lot of information. I was like, this is like information overload. And she was like, don't worry. They got it. They have a way to, they're very engaging. And so going into it, I was a little bit skeptical. As you presented, it made everything a lot clearer. Again, one of the things for me, again, as when Ms. Rogers was here, she was talking about the new accountability measure, our model. And I was concerned. I was really concerned about how are we going to effectively implement this? How are we going to create that cultural shift for our division? And today, as you presented, it gave me that reassurance that we're in good hands. You know, for me, I was getting focused on five areas. Curriculum alignment, professional development, student engagement, targeted intervention, and utilization of feedback. And as I saw this presentation, again, you hit every one of those areas. So again, I just want to say thank you so much. I look forward to our work sessions where we get a chance to see this even more. So again, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for the comments.
Yes, and this is a small glimpse into why you guys are so important, why our specialists, our intervention, our teachers, and that high-dose tutoring, that one-to-one, that peer-to-peer support. This is, you said it all, as to why we need the funding for it and why we need these positions. The VLA said we had to have it. They don't tell us how we got to get it. We just make it work. But you guys are in motion and you're showing us why we actually need this. The numbers are showing us that it is effective and it's showing us why our students need this. And I just want to say I had an opportunity to actually see Ms. Austin in action over at Rose when they got their well-deserved accolades for being one of the highest, highest, not just in one area, but overall for the state of Virginia. Brunswick County is on the move. People can say what they want to say, but we are on the move and it's in the right direction. And just to see the way your love for words and your love for the phonetics of it. And it was almost like sing-songy when it was talking to the kids. But they were getting it. And I was like, wow, this is amazing just to see it in action. So continue to do what you're doing. You are so appreciated. Can't say it enough. Thank you for the appreciation.
Thank you for investing in us.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Now, before we shift off to instructional report, I do have one question. I know tomorrow is a remote learning day. And there was a concern, again, I had a concern from the last meeting. And I know we talked about preparation for snow days and things of that nature. And at one point, we were two, two to one, two devices to each child. And we were doing virtual learning. I know we've kind of shifted to more instructional packages now. For students who may struggle, who may need that individualized attention and help, how are we meeting the needs of those students through instructional packages? I do want to make sure that we address that.
And as she's walking up, one of the things that we don't have in our budget is hotspots for every single child and Wi-Fi that we had during COVID to send home. So that's not something that we currently have. But I'll let Dr. Hampton speak to what the plan is.
Thank you for your question. So we are making sure that our teachers are still available. So it's a virtual workday for our staff as well. So it's not just a learning day for our students, but our teachers are available throughout the entire day. There are office hours that are established. So there's communication that is taking place, whether they're using Class Dojo, the Remind. the Remind App, School Messenger. There are several forms of communications that teachers and, um, families are going back and forth with if they have any questions in regards to any of the packets that are, um, sent home. And so the, uh, packets that are put together are skills and activities that they have reviewed and it's more reviewed, they're not sharing new information with the student that they're not going to get, you know, that, um, explicit support from their, uh, teacher. But they do have office hours that are available. I am checking, um, we go, we also have our Google Classroom where everything is uploaded and I am constantly seeing teachers engaging with their students on the, um, Google Classroom. And again, through phone call, there's also a, um, spreadsheet that they are completing, what their communication is with, with parents or what students. So students, it's funny because I was actually able to see a student leaving a comment. Can you help me with this particular question? So the teachers are engaging with the students through, even during our virtual learning.
All right. So the students and parents are both aware of how they made contact with the teacher, um, on a remote learning day?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And that information was disseminated to them how? How did?
So it's printed, it's also using School Messenger. So, um, school administrators are sending the communication home. And then it's also on the packet itself.
Okay.
On how they're able to reach out to their teachers, what the office hours are, how they can reach them. And they have the several different options for the communication.
Okay.
And we may want to check the messages that went out today because I know today, I listened to the message and more so, we kind of told the students to make sure that they complete the remote package as well as told the teachers that this is a remote learning, um, learning day or virtual day and that they need to check their emails or whatnot. So if those teachers are available, we may want to make sure that that's clear for the parents and students who may need additional assistance, um, or whatnot.
Are you saying that because the teachers, we told the teachers to check their emails or?
No. In regards to the students being able to have access to the teachers on a, um, on a remote learning day, that wasn't in the, um, phone call. Because I listened to the phone call coming in. And it was more so, this is a remote learning day, make sure you can put your instructional packages. Teachers, please, um, make sure that you check your email and this is a virtual learning day. So that piece about, um, being able to.
Just clarifying the communication.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you too.
But it's on the packet, you said as well?
Yes, ma'am. And because there is a letter. And so the letter is just to make sure that the parents are aware, th- these are our remote learning days and the students are expected to complete the packet and to work through the packet with the student, not just to give it to them and, you know, send them off and stay engaged and they can also communicate with the teachers as well.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I do appreciate it.
All right, next, we're moving right along with our Chronic Absenteeism Report, presented by Ms. Mallory.
Good evening, Board Chair Stewart, Board Vice Chair, Mr. Ward, other board members, Division Superintendent. Before you, um, we have our attendance update. And this will be for the, um, month of January, okay? Keep going, please. Thank you. Okay, so you can see that our schools continue to be, um, above ninety-three percent for their attendance, um, which we continue to apply them every week that we go over their attendance. We have attendance meetings on Thursdays, um, to just see where they are and what attention they may need for certain students. Um, if you can go, please, next slide. Thank you. At the time that we did a snapshot of this report, we were operating on, uh, ten or more days being, uh, a student would be chron- noted as chronically absent. So, um, you can see that, uh, the numbers are there for, for all of our schools. Um, and at the present time, you also have the numbers for how many students there were at the point of eighteen or more days. Um, at the end of the year, any student that has eighteen or more days is considered chronically absent. But as you move through the year, you have to take how many days that we have been in school and take ten percent of that. Okay? Next slide, please. This is just noting the number of home visits that have been done to this point, um, the number of, um, messages that are being sent out of the Kenvo system and the calls that are being made from, um, fa- from the staff members. As well as the, um, truancy plans that have been written for, um, any students having five unexcused, um, absences. Um, they're writing the truancy plans and having the truancy conferences. Okay? So that is our attendance report for the, well, actually, it was, um, the month of, what, January? Yes.
I have, I have one question. You, um, I do believe it's a slide with, um, the number of, uh, eight students with eighteen or more. Is that an accumulation from the beginning of school up until now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. You know, because these numbers still remain fairly high. And I know at one point, we were being very creative, like with the Perfect Attendance Awards and things of that nature and the raffle, um, not the raffle, but the drawing each month. And what I'm concerned about is normally during the spring months, we also see a, even a greater decline. And we have the makeup days. So what are we do- I mean, I see the, I see the phone calls being made. Many of those are pretty much the automated calls or whatnot.
Automated and, um, a human.
And a human, okay.
Yes.
Um, but I am definitely concerned about when you look at seventy-something at the high school out of four hundred and six, thirty-two at, you know, the middle school. So I just want to kind of know, what are we doing? What, what are, what are we doing differently?
So they are continuing to target their students for the, whether they're doing after-school, um, sessions or doing the Saturday sessions. Um, and then those students would be able to, you could make up to or recoup up to fifteen days. Uh, those days will not be, will not show until the end of the school year. So we are, we have a spreadsheet that the schools, um, are in the, entering their data and tracking, um, how many hours the students are coming in for those sessions. And then, um, at the end of the year, those days will be able to be, um, overturned.
So we have a tracking system?
Yes, sir. And that is nothing, um, new. We, we had that last year as well. The state allowed for it.
And I think it helped us recoup, uh, recoup a lot of those hours back to keep this.
Correct.
Yeah, where we needed to be.
And how many of the students taking advantage of this?
We are seeing students taking advantage of it. Um, we do, we are running into some challenges with it. Um, they are reaching out, when I say they, administrators are reaching out, as well as, um, the school staff are just giving that personal touch um, to explain the importance of, um, having students participate in this, in this, um, time. Because while we recognize that they were absent, uh, but at the same time, we're trying to recoup that attendance for them and help them with whatever they miss during the time.
Because, you know, I mean, I guess for me, I'm just kind of wondering, I'm like, hey, if they don't want to come to school during a regular school day and then trying to get them to come after hours or on Saturday, you know, are we really going to be able to capture them, you know, or whatnot? So that's just my only concern.
And I will say, they're, they, they are targeting, this is not open to all students. They're targeting student groups. Um, so they're looking at the number of days that students have been out um, and then targeting those particular students to bring them in and send out a special invitation to them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I do think I have the next thing as well.
You do.
Okay. Is that the Code of Conduct?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, in the Code of Conduct, um, we did have to do a few, uh, revisions. Uh, I did, in the document that we submitted, you would see that there was some language that was either revised or there were things that were deleted, uh, such as like random searches. That whole, uh, section, um, of notation came out, okay? Um, and then, other things, we revised the language to be in, uh, alignment with the policy changes that you all received, um, for review and for approval.
And this is just for information at this point?
The, what we're submitting right here?
Yes.
Um, provided, whatever you do with the policy, then this is just to show you how the, um, Code of Conduct will go into alignment with it.
All right. Then you have the local wellness policy.
Okay, great. So my last thing is, um, the school local wellness policy. Um, the local wellness policy that you have is regulations. And so, um, the, there are three policies that came before you. J-H-C-H, J-A, well, J-H-C-H, School Meals and Snacks, J-H-C-F, Student Wellness, and E-F, Food Services. The J-H-C-F-R is the regulations, um, for the student wellness. And again, uh, the wellness regulations and the policies, one, they are being cross-referenced. Uh, that was a notation that we were getting from DOE. We need to have a cross-reference, so we're just making sure that that's in alignment. Um, and then language updates were made. So that the policies and the regulations were in alignment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mallory.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move along to Ms. Pearson with her cell phone, um, Learning Environment Regulations.
Good evening again.
Hello.
The document that you have before you is a regulations in accordance with the Executive Order from our Governor for Cell Phone Free Learning Environments. Um, this is just for information only, there is no action needed on this item.
All right. And then the next is, do we get? Next. Policy update.
Thank you, Ms. Mace. Before you, the following policies are being presented for a first read, but they will need approval in the month of February. J-H-C-H, School Meals and Snacks, that's a policy deletion. J-H-C-F, Student Wellness, and E-F-B, Food Services.
In March.
I'm sorry, March.
No, you're fine, we put the title.
Okay.
You're fine, it's March.
All right, and then our professional staff development?
All right. The following policy, um, the following information is being presented. It's a regulation, so there is no action needed, it's just for information only. Um, but this is a change to our request for tuition, um, professional reimbursement form. Uh, Ms. Mace, do you mind opening that form, please? Um, in accordance to what we currently have in place, we, um, want to make sure that we are capturing our entire audience of our Grow Your Own program. So on page two of this form, you will see that we made some adjustments based upon the I Teach implementation, which was not a program that we were currently using when the original regulation was presented. So this is to include that, um, as a part of our Brunswick Blooms Initiative. And that's for information only. And next, we should have the proposed calendar option. All right. Um, before you, you have our proposed calendar option. Um, our, our division was given two options, option one and option two. Um, option one mirrored our current, um, calendar and option two, there were a few revisions. So on this next slide, you'll see a summary of those results. Our employees across the division were given the opportunity to, to vote on those two proposed options for the twenty-five, twenty, you can go back up, Ms. Mace. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, a total of two hundred and twenty-three responses were received. Employees were given, um, a little under, under a week because we wanted to make sure we get them, we got that on the personnel agenda, um, on the agenda for your review. But, um, employees without computer access were given the option to submit their vote through their immediate supervisor. Um, I was excited that, um, several members of our Transportation Department, they don't have access to immediate emails, but they did take the initiative to meet with their immediate supervisor so that they could make their voice heard. Um, between those two options, option two received an overwhelming preference, um, at, um, approximately ninety-one percent of those votes, with option one receiving a nine percent of those votes. Some of the feedback that we received, because there was a comment section, the employees expressed their gratitude for the opportunity to be able to provide their input on the decision. Um, there were some positive highlights, um, uh, with the inclusion of, um, a, a little bit of a longer Thanksgiving break, which was well-received in option two, um, as well as, um, our recommendation for incorporating a day off in October. Our Calendar, Calendar Committee met and one of the things we noticed was that in September, there was Labor Day break, but then our staff didn't get another break until November. Um, so that, that was a suggestion as well because that is such a long stretch. Um, and then, of course, there was a lot of, um, expression for the thoughtfulness of the development of both options. Um, but in the conclusion, option two was the unanimous choice amongst staff. So that is being presented tonight for, uh, my first read.
Now, are we able to see option one as well?
Should you choose to see option one, I can present that, but?
So be able to compare the differences between the two?
We got it, we, we got them, it's in the email.
It's in the email?
We got them earlier, um, because I know why they chose that to do, but yeah, I would have too. But yeah, we got them as a first read at email.
All right, so I'm going to take another look at it because I'm.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, I know the, the complete differences between the two.
And I can highlight a few of those differences if you.
I think you just did Christmas, I mean Thanksgiving, long breaks.
There was a difference in Thanksgiving. Um, traditionally, what we've done is there was a change in the timeframe for offices closed. We switched that up a little bit from the May to start, from starting in May to June. Um, another opt, another change was the changing of the spring break time to reflect what was, um, in previous years so that we'd be kind of aligned with some of our neighboring divisions, um, as well for that timeframe. Um, in addition to that, we looked at option one and how option one, um, veteran, um, I'm sorry, Election Day is normally a student holiday, but we were looking at the option of turning that into an asynchronous learning day but still giving our teachers the professional development support that they need, as well as adding a professional development day in March because with option one in our current calendar, our teachers will have professional development when they return from their Christmas break in January, but they don't get another professional development session until the end of the school year in May. So we wanted to give them an additional option to have some more professional development, um, support.
All right, what about the, um, the October, um, request incorporating the day off in October? That was not included in this, uh?
The option was to, um, that was a suggestion, um, from, I believe it was maybe one employee out of the, out of the vote. Um, but that was a recommendation for them to, to have that. And I do think that that was in accordance with the long break from September until November.
Thanks, I, I didn't know.
Yes. Um, we did not lose any instructional time with making that adjustment. We actually were able to add a professional development day with option two and giving our students a day synchronous, two asynchronous learning days. Um, so I was really pleased with that. Um, in addition to the fact that, um, making an adjustment with the calendar so that it can give those extra two days before the Thanksgiving break but not taking away from instruction to give us our ninety-ninety by first semester and second semester.
Got you.
All right. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Now, Dr. Bled, I know at one point, you and I had a conversation briefly about the difference between a four-day work week as well as year-round school. Have we, any, have we got any additional information on that?
No, because I, as far as year-round school, I, I do think that that's something that you all as a board would probably want to explore, that's something that you're interested in. The four-day work week, um, one of the divisions that I'm aware that was doing it, I'm not sure if they still are, so I don't want to put that name out there. Um, but it wasn't a true four-day work week because they still had students home, but they had maybe teachers home working virtually with students on certain days and then they'd come in and have half-day. So it wasn't really a true measure. And I, you know, I would say, for me, just professional opinion of where we are now, we've made a great deal of progress. Um, but I think the more that we can have our, our kids here, the, um, the better. So I do think if, if you explore anything, it would probably be year-round versus a four-day if you wanted to look at doing something other than a traditional calendar. Yes, sir. Yes, I read all the articles.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Next, we're gonna have a technology bid from Mr. Mace.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, Madam Superintendent, members of the community. This is for action. The Technology Department is seeking approval for the next phase of our network upgrades. This is to the Brunswick High School Tech Center only, and this is for the switch replacements and expansion, in addition to the upgrading of the cabling that goes behind the scenes. This project went out to bid in late November, early December, and we got one response. We plan to apply for e-rate funding, which will cover eighty-five percent of the cost, which is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, two hundred, two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty-six cents. That's the total cost, and fifteen percent of that will be responsible for Brunswick County Public Schools, which would be a total of thirty-two thousand. So we are seeking approval to move forward with this project, so we can start hopefully in the next few months. Any questions?
In School Board, this, I know what the question was gonna be about the thirty-two thousand dollars, I could feel it. That's part of the two hundred and fifty thousand that you approved to be transferred over from your capital account, so it, it's been covered.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Mace.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Clary will present us with the finance report.
Good evening. This is the fiscal year twenty-five finance report for February. The fiscal year twenty-five revenues and expenditures as of January the thirty-first, according to the Bright system, indicates that BCPS has expended fourteen million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from our categorical budget and received a total of nine million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand in revenues. The fiscal year twenty-five budget was created on an ADM of thirteen-ten, and our current ADM is thirteen-oh-nine, so we're up two. Do you, are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Clary? Thank you. All right, Dr. Majet?
We're up two, we're up two.
We're up one. We're up two, 'cause we. Up one.
From last month, it was thirteen-oh-eight.
Okay, last month.
All right, sorry, we've been lagging at thirteen-oh-seven for a while, thirteen-oh-eight.
But we just show up at one, based upon what we created the budget on. But we, we're good, though.
Yeah, we're good. Oh, we will not. Okay. All right, so I'd like to present the fiscal year twenty-six budget proposal tonight. Thank you. And to take you through this, I'll do some of it, and then Ms. Clary is going to work extensively with me to cover this. As always, we start with our mission and vision, and I know you'd already heard that earlier tonight, but that's something I always tell the team, it's a foundation of our work, is what we do. With our strategic plan, this aligns with all five goals of our strategic plan: academic excellence, nurturing culture, premier workforce, family and community connection, and operational excellence, and you say resource stewardship. So to take you through the budget, you'll see this year, the presentation looks a little bit different, because I, I think advocacy is really gonna be the name of the game this go-around. And so when we, when you go to the next slide, okay, so when you look at this, you know, over the course of those months with the budget framework, you had an instruction presentation, you had an HR presentation, transportation, excuse me, operations technology. And so for instruction, your key considerations, and we put the full request link below. As you heard earlier, we'll need a secondary reading specialist, so I just did a few highlights on the slide, but those links are there for you to peruse through and go through. And we actually had a finance committee meeting with the Board Finance Committee to, to cover these items. So that secondary reading specialist, as you heard Ms. Austin mention, it's gonna be required next year. Instructional coaches, I wanna continue to keep those positions. As you see, they support teachers in instructional practices, students. And with that, to give a little bit of background, so you know we were able to, we hadn't had them. And so we were able, because of ESRS funds, to add those positions in. And then we became very creative when we got the all-in funding. And the all-in funding, we could've used it over three fiscal years, but I didn't wanna miss a year of doing what we needed to do and continue services for kids. And so we were, our delegate, 'cause we were told to go see our delegate, so Otto was instrumental in just helping us out with like, hey, how do we move this around to do this? And so we were able to, to move those monies so that we could continue those services for this school year. But obviously, beyond this school year, you'll see within this budget, these are all the things that we wanna keep going. Summer programs, a hundred thousand dollars for remediating, remediation and enrichment. Mister Perrier, you mentioned, hey, the after-school and Saturday for attendance and those incentives. Well, it does, it, it costs money. So we definitely need to be in a position where we can keep those things going, because now, even with Saturdays, we still carefully monitor how many Saturdays we can do, because we no longer have that onslaught of that extra money that we had before. Mentor stipends, being able to support new teacher onboarding as people are going, coming on board, so that we can continue to build that level of capacity. So those are just a few of the key considerations when we start looking at instruction. And again, you have the link, you can see the full request. Next slide, when you see human resources, you saw the presentation for that. Looking at how can we digitize our records and enhance our levels of compliance, so HR management system. Professional development, continue training the HR team. Tuition reimbursement program, when you start thinking about supporting teacher licensing in Brunswick Blooms, and having those resources there that we can continue building that capacity. I think sometimes we get the questions of, oh, well, and I, I think I've got them from, from some of the board, I'll pick on Dr. Burns, like, well, you know, why aren't we getting more teachers here? We can get more people here. Well, sometimes when we're in small and rural areas, it's not the same in terms of that level of attraction, when you talk about young people. I think most of us are at least closely connected in some way, being from South Side of Virginia or being in an area that's relatively similar. But when we're having students come out of college sometimes, and if I'm coming out of college in a more urban area or a larger area, that, you know, what are those other things to do that entice? But we have very strong and talented people here, and we wanna make sure that we can continue to pour into them and build, build that level of capacity. Stipends for hard-to-fill positions, attracting skilled candidates, and having more money for recruitment events and doing more hiring incentives, so that we can continue to attract people to Brunswick County Public Schools. Technology, Chromebook refresh, three hundred and fifty devices, and these are just snapshots for everybody. The full link of every request is below, okay? So this isn't all. Technology, Chromebook refresh, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars there, so he can maintain a level of functional inventory. So this isn't surplus, this is just functional inventory. Interactive panels, upgraded, updated classroom tools, doing some security upgrades. We need, although we know shortly we'll move to a new facility for K six, the high school here, this complex, really needs some more modern door access systems versus the, you know, the master key that we've all had. More things for penetration testing and phishing campaigns to strengthen our network security, and then new tech support positions, because right now, while we're within SOQs or standards of quality, we recognize the standards of quality, what we get in state funding doesn't always match what we actually need in terms of people. So those additional requests are there. Then operations and maintenance, wastewater plant removal to demolish some outdated infrastructure, HVAC motor replacement, the two motors in the, HVAC motors in the gym, LED lighting upgrades, and that could, you know, for energy-efficient lighting in the cafeteria and gym, chiller repairs to rebuild aged systems, locker room HVAC replacement, a hundred and forty thousand filled units, pipe replacement projects for steam pipe upgrades, elevator modernization, dump truck replacement, and even when you, and so that's just maintenance alone. Operations, transportation. Next slide, okay. Diesel buses. Although we were able to buy several buses and upgrade the fleet during COVID, as Dr. Carter had mentioned during that presentation in December, when you're looking at it, those buses now are, they're running double runs. So every morning, they're, those same buses that are new buses, instead of doing one run in the morning and one run in the afternoon, they're doing four in a day. So it wears it down. You think about our own personal vehicles, if we drove that much, we're gonna wear, wear it down. So these buses are starting to wear down. Service trucks for roadside repairs, because as the fleet becomes more and more aging or we, or overuse, you're gonna need more service trucks to go out for roadside repairs. Safety SUVs, office building renovation, that little trailer that they end definitely needs, you know, it's concerned, like of how long will it withstand with them being in that building? Tree removal, because there is a tree that is very close to, unfortunately, and being honest, that's very close to that building that, that, you know, I think Dr. Carter and them, they've been able to trim it back a little bit, correct? Did y'all trim some of the branches?
Yes.
Yes, but I think they want it removed just for the safety of, you know, that building is a strong wind, we're gonna be in trouble. Shop equipment for more diagnostic, tire maintenance equipment, an additional diesel mechanic, and then some routing, better improved routing software. So all of the requests are linked in there. I'm gonna let Ms. Clary go over the calculation tool, and that's our direct A template that we get from the Department of Ed. And then when she's done there, then I wanna jump back in on a few things.
Okay. This is a snapshot of the actual calculation tool from the Department of Education. If you look on the yellow shaded side to the right, that's fiscal year twenty-six. You can see the state share and the local share for the, this section is for the standards of quality programs. Then the next slide shows incentive and categorical funded programs. And then the next slide shows lottery and early childhood funded programs. And the total is at the bottom, total state and local funds. The state funds is seventeen million, four seventy-four, two thirty-five, with a local match of ten million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So a couple of things to point out on these slides, if you, can you go back to the first one, Mr. Mace, if you don't mind? Yes. So if you look there, and it say our projected ADM, so the Department of Ed, I think initially, was projecting our ADM to be a little bit lower than that?
Twelve-seventy.
Yeah, about twelve-seventy, and so we went up, we went up some, but we still wanna kinda stay in line, because I'd rather underestimate than overestimate it, 'cause that impacts our state funding. You'll see, because one of the items that I'm gonna get to, while at-risk is here, because that's been something that we haven't, we haven't received, but while the at-risk funding is here, and it's listed on SOQ, it doesn't have the arrow beside it, so it's not required for a local match. So any things with, am I saying it correctly? Anything with the arrow is required for the, the local match to, to go along with it.
And just for point of clarification, if, if we don't get the local match, we don't get the at-risk?
No, no. Anything that is not required, if there's not, if the match isn't provided for, you don't get it.
I just wanted to be fully understood that if we don't give, they're not gonna give?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So if you can go to the fiscal year twenty budget summary request. All right, so I wanna explain this. So you'll see here, the calculation tool, what that, tool that Ms. Clary just went over, the required local match would be ten million, nine sixty-nine, five eighty-eight. The cur, the current county contribution is eight point four million, eight million, four hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and fifty. We are requesting an additional two million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. And the rationale behind this is, this is truly, when you look BCPS fiscal year twenty-six budget request, our budget request came to five million, nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We didn't let the team, and you can ask the team, and you can put me out of the room and ask them, I was like, don't give me anything, I, I don't wanna wish list. Tell me what you actually need, what you actually need for your department. Don't give me a wish list or anything like that, 'cause we're not in the position of a wish list. And I know I've said jokingly to some of the, 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 the staff, but honestly, when I look at it, and some old adage, what is it, robbing Peter to pay Paul? Peter doesn't have anything else. I don't have anything else, anything else creative up my sleeve that we can say, hey, you know, we were able to play around with the ESRS money, we were able to be creative with all-in. We really are at a point where getting the at-risk funding will be truly beneficial, because we need the technology, we need the transportation, we need to keep the staffing. We're making progress. But we, we can't keep pushing forward, because after this year, we won't have any of those extra resources. So we really are at a stage where we need this. So their budget, the budget request came to the five point, five million, nine hundred and eleven thousand. The at-risk funding, if the local match is secured, so if we got the two point five million, then that would give us what we needed to, with all the at-risk, and it would put us at five point, five million, nine hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty. And so if you see at the bottom, I just put a note, the budget request aligns with the at-risk funding, that Brunswick County Public Schools have received, the local match is secured, so we're requesting an additional two million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight, I'm from the Board of Supervisors, to secure this funding, should you approve this budget to move forward later in the month, or actually in March. Those all-in funds, that's, those all-in funds that's there on the fiscal year twenty-five, you'll see that that is just a little bit of that, some of that construction fund would go over to fiscal year twenty-six, if we don't spend it all this fiscal year. But again, none of those, that's not new money. All-in is over, and, you know, we already received the money for the GO Tech grant, and we'll have that update. I know Ms. McMillan wanna, GO Tech update, and I'll have that in March. Expenditure sheet, you'll see there, and you know, revenues and expenditures, you always want your revenues to exceed your expenditures, but you'll see here, we have them matching, which matching is fine. GO Tech grant, you'll see that for fiscal year twenty-five, but you don't see that carryover, and all-in funds for fiscal year twenty-six. So those two sort of mirror each other. And so when we think about next steps, next slide. Fiscal year twenty-six budget public hearing is gonna be February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, here at six o'clock, correct, Ms. Clary?
Yes.
The School Board, you all would vote on the budget at the March tenth meeting. After that budget, the budget is approved, if you approve it, we provide it to the Board of Supervisors via the county administration, so we give it to Ms. Whittington and Ms. Carter by March fourteenth, because if there's any changes or anything you want done, we just put a couple days in there so that we could clean it up. And then anytime between March and June, that's where Board of Supervisors and, and state approves their budgets. If you look at the last slide, so I know that we do a lot of fact sheets, but we wanted to give you all resources for, to have conversations. This is the time, you know, we can do the request, but definitely, I think you all have your counterparts that you communicate with, and even as community may ask you questions, so that you have the information. So all the links are in there. You've seen the budget framework. Can you click on the fact sheet one pager, Mr. Mace?
Oh, no.
Okay?
Okay, we'll fix that. We'll get that fixed.
Or not. All right, so can you go to the HR one, and then we'll come back to that? Okay, so what, what we did was created, after all of the presentations you had, remember, in November, you had an instruction presentation and an HR presentation. In December, you had the operations presentation and a technology presentation. You all know, as a board, I love a fact sheet, because it's just a good one pager, or maybe two pages, that will give you all of the information, just sort of condensed, that you can take with you. So you'll see in there, just by example of this HR one, it's just a snapshot of Ms. Pearson's presentation that she had already provided for you. So as you look through, it'll be one for HR, instruction, operations, technology. And then we did create one that was just sort of a fact sheet one pager that encompasses all of those items. We also, you can go back to the, to the slide. Yes, sir. Thank you.
The one pager should be fixed.
Okay. Can you click on the one pager again?
Let's see what we got here. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So you'll see that has everything on it. It's just giving you a quick snapshot, so you can take all the individual ones and have the conversations, or you at least have this one, it's two pages, and it encompasses everything from all of the various slides. It has a strategic plan alignment, the tier system, how we presented all of the presentations, and tier one, tier two, tier three. And so it's just something that's, we feel is an easy way for you to have something, to have those conversations. And I open it to faculty and staff. If it's something you don't know, I mean, everybody's not in everyone's department. So definitely, as you have conversations about it, it's there. If you go back to the slide, and it's just two other items that we added. Although we've covered local composite index and what that is, we know that that's how the state determines our funding with local composite index in our, in our ADM, and you hear the ADM every, every single month with the financial report, but those two items are, are there. But I wanted to make sure you had as much resources and everything readily available that you can use. That's LCI, and then you have another fact sheet that's in there about the ADM. That's LCI, and then you have another fact sheet that's in there about the ADM. Okay. And he's even saying, hey, what's the difference? And you've seen this one, I haven't changed this for a few years, so it's been the same one. But I wanna put that out there to you all, um, as a board to, I know the budget presentation looks a little different, but I just felt like, instead of a bunch of different graphs and graphics, it's really just getting down to, this is where we are. These are all of the requests, and this is what we need. And then here are the tools, um, that hopefully will support your work in doing so, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, as a point of clarification, we need the two point five million dollar match in order to get to five million, is that correct?
To, for it to be five million, yes, sir.
Alright. And the numbers that we have here, the, um, the quotes, are these actual quotes or these kinda rough estimates about how much it basically costs for each one of these items that's requested?
They're rough estimates based on pricing that we've used in the past, or we've checked with others. We don't wanna go and get quotes from companies and, and, you know, develop bad business relationships if we don't, we're not able to move forward with these items.
Alright, any more questions? Alright. Thanks for that presentation, a lot of information to soak in. Next, we're gonna go to our overnight field trips.
Um, so you do have a few updates with overnight field trips. There's a cosmetology trip that you'll see that, um, the day of the trip is March twenty-second through March twenty-six, and that's for cosmetology to attend. I can barely read. Oh, I'm sorry, I look like a six. Sorry, I apologize. No, 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 it's a six. It's in here, it's.
Oh, they changed the date at the bottom.
Oh, they changed.
The form is the twenty second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the form.
Oh, got it.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Alright, and so they're going to the International Beauty Show, um, in New York. And we may need to get them to start typing these, because it, it's hard to read. So, that's one item that's there. FBLA trip. The date of that trip is April fourth through fifth, and those students are going to the FBLA Leadership Conference. And that is in.
Reston?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, because these things are hard to read. Sorry, I'm going right off the form. And then April third through April sixth, VHS, and that's Ms. Chambers' trip, and that's for the, I believe, oh, the twenty twenty-five State Leadership and Recognition Conference, and that's in Virginia Beach, April third through sixth. And so, those are for information and action tonight.
Alrighty. Any questions? Alright. Next, we're gonna move down to Agenda Preparation for Upcoming Meetings. They are listed below. Now, we go to our committee reports.
So, I do have a question about the upcoming, um, upcoming meeting preparation. Now, I know over the years, we've kinda talked about, uh, special needs services, things of that nature, and we had identified areas that we may need to address. Is there any way we can get a presentation kinda looking at our comprehensive services for those individuals who may have an IEP, five oh four, and/or some other type of special need, such as, um, what is it, Asperger's Syndrome, blind, vision impaired, deaf and hard of hearing, those type services? How are we meeting the needs of those students? Can we get a presentation on that for the next meeting? Because I know.
Ms. Mallory, you good for March? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Any more discussion? Alright, we'll move it down to committee reports. The Instruction Committee did meet on February third. Dr. Burns and I, and I dare not follow Ms. Bianca and Ms. Austin, so, they said it all. But again, I do appreciate what you ladies are doing, and definitely you, Ms. Hawkins-Weston as well. Thank you, thank you. And our Finance Committee did meet on the twenty-ninth. Mr. Ward, you have.
Yeah, just, uh, we went over the budget, Dr. Majette did a great job, and Ms. Claire presented it tonight. The only thing I will say, definitely the finance, the Budget Committee meeting on, or the Budget meeting, I lost my date, it's February twenty-seventh, public hearing on the budget. If you have any questions or anything, that is definitely the perfect time to be here, that Thursday night, I believe it is, February twenty-seventh at six o'clock.
Absolutely. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move down to action items. I'm gonna get Dr. Carter. The first up for action is, um, the closing of Russell Middle School. But if Dr. Carter, if you could come up and give us some brief, brief information. Brief, brief information.
Because I know we had a roof update, and that was the question. He had a roof update, and that was the question.
Yes.
Some of you all had.
Yeah, we had. Thank you.
Board Chair, Board Members, Vice Chair, Superintendent. Brief update, the last time that you all convened was on February third, a week ago. Josh Bauer came from CRA, the architectural firm, and gave some updates on the, um, current work that's going on with the HVAC upgrades at the high school upstairs, informed us of how his plan would come together with creating the classroom space. The HVAC upgrade is underway, and he gave some information on the roof repairs. Is there any additional information?
For Mr. Bauer? I, I guess we just wanted to go over the.
The text you got tonight from Josh.
Yes, one thing that, um, he did, um, inform us that a question was asked about the roof, and that if the roof, worst-case scenario, needs to be completely replaced, it would take two months to replace. And, um, the roof estimate and total roof report for the high school and central office was done in twenty twenty-two. You all should have received a copy of an email with that full roof report this week as well.
So, Dr. Carter, I guess for clarification, if they vote tonight to close Russell Middle School this summer.
Yes.
Um, but say they make a decision about the roof in March, or they make the decision in April. And, because say we don't get the information till April, and they say we gotta do a full roof, are we still good to get the full roof done this summer? What he's, is he saying it takes two months to get somebody, or two months to complete it?
Two months from start to finish.
From start to finish, so we could possibly still get it done this summer?
Yes, and he said the only delay would be if there was no contractor available.
You don't know whether that's one month or six months.
Right, but that contract and company that came, they do do those repairs, and there are several other firms as well that we can utilize. Most recently, the, uh, last roof that we had done was the one at Red Oak Surgeon, and that roof contractor has informed Mr. Thomas that he is looking for work.
Awesome. Alright, any more questions? Any more discussion? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, I will take a motion, or entertain a motion to close Russell Middle School for the twenty twenty-five academic school year, transition seventh and eighth grade students to Brunswick High School, and keep the si, sixth grader stu, sixth grade students at their prospective elementary schools in the school, um, until the new school is complete.
Madam Chair? So moved, that we, um, move forward with closing Russell Middle School for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic school year, transition the seventh and eighth grade students to Brunswick High School, and keep the sixth grades at their respective elementary schools until the new school is complete.
Second.
Alright, it has been heard, motioned, and properly second that we close Russell Middle School for the twenty twenty-five academic school year, transition the seventh and eighth grade students to Brunswick High School, and keep the sixth grade students at their prospective elementary schools until the new school is complete. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, the ayes have it, the motion carries that we will close Russell Middle School for the twenty twenty-five academic school year, transition the seventh and eighth grade students to Brunswick High School, and keep the sixth grade students at their prospective elementary schools until the new school is complete. Yes, and communication will be sent out on tomorrow to everyone.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We're gonna move down to our sc, school board norms and protocols. We have two sets. One, um, set one is the Brunswick norms and protocols with Board Attorney norm added, and then set two, the Brunswick norms and protocols without the Board Attorney norm added. So, I will entertain a motion that we approve set one, the Brunswick's, uh, Brunswick norms and protocols with Board Attorney norm added. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we add to the Brunswick norms and protocols that we, with the Board, um, Board norms one, with Board Attorney norm added. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Nay. Ms. Claire, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Seward?
Nay.
Mr. Ward?
Nay.
Excuse me, um, in the case, in the situation here, I think the all-board members should vote, and then let the Chair break the tie if there's a tie.
There's not a tie.
It was, no. Originally, it was two, two.
Four.
For the first one, there was a tie. So.
It is the first one.
Right. So, your Board Chair, you vote last to break the tie, in case there is a tie. Yeah. But what happened is she called for you to vote first, as a roll call vote. She called you to vote first.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. I'll, I can restate that.
Oh, just, okay.
Was, was there a call for discussion? Was there a call for discussion?
No.
Alright. Can we call for, um, can we call for discussion?
Would you like to have a discussion?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Is there a discussion, Mr. P?
Yes, I do. Um, the item that's up for discussion is, I'll give you one second, communication with the attorney. In the spirit of transparency, I think that anytime Board members, a Board Member or the Chair or Superintendent contact their attorney, now, I understand with day-to-day operations, the Superintendent has, you know, has autonomy to do that. But when it comes down to board matters and things of that nature, out of the spirit of transparency, all Board Members should at least be aware of what needs to be discussed with their attorney. So, that's one reason why I support this norm being added. So, that way, it opens, it opens the communication, increase transparency, as well as afford the other Board Members an opportunity to ask questions if they have questions. Because oftentimes, you know, we know that we can say one thing, by the time it gets to the end of the table, it may have changed or what it could be, based upon what we can remember. So, out of the spirit of transparency, I support that norm being added, um, because again, that's, you know, that's what we about.
So, what did the word and say, did you just read it?
Is there anything new outside of what we've already discussed, like when we had the session?
You wanted to know what the protocol stated to that? The protocol states, any recom, recommended or suggested communication will be channeled through the Board before approved contact. Unless a closed session meeting is needed, Board Members will advise the Chair if they wish to ask additional questions to the attorney, and if they would like to ask their questions in person or through the Board Chair. I also support, um, the communication that Mr. Perier stated. I think it's very important because if we have a Board Attorney, the Board Attorney is for the Board, not just for, um, one person or for, just example, our Chair. I think our Chair comes into play when it's the will of the Board. So, um, that is the reason why I'm supporting that particular Board norms, because I feel like, as a Board, we all should have access to ask questions, so we could say, we always talk about budget and money. So, say, for example, if the Attorney speaks to our Board Chair, and we still have additional questions, that's additional money we would have to pay in order to speak to the Attorney. So, why not, at the very beginning, allow the whole Board to have that communication, and then we don't have to worry about budget concerns that we're always boasting about in this setting? So, that is the reason why I support that particular Board norm.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I get two different, um, understandings from what you stated and from what is there, so I don't support that. I need more clarification.
I mean.
But not at this time, we can talk about it, this is later.
Right, the vote, we, we, you know, we, so we can table the discussion, we can table it.
There's no need, the motion has been made, we'll just wait, and it.
The motion's on the floor.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor. So, we took the vote, I think you were just doing for clarification of a roll call vote, just to record.
This is the motion for option one, the roll call vote, Dr. Burns?
No.
McMillan?
Yay.
Perier?
Yay.
Seward? Uh, Ward?
No.
Seward?
No. The motion dies. Next, I will entertain a motion for option two, Brunswick norms and prot, protocols without Board Attorney norm added. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been motioned and properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Ms. Claire?
Uh, roll call vote for option two. Dr. Burns?
Yay.
Ms. McMillan?
Nay, because I wanna save money for, with our budget.
Mr. Perier?
Nay, yes, I, I would like to consult with our legal att, on my legal team.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Seward?
Yeah. The motion carries. Next, we'll move to item C for action, technology bid. Is there a motion to approve the E-plus bid as presented?
So moved, Madam Chair?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and properly second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, being there is no nays. Overnight field trips, um, call for a motion to approve the technology, FBLA, and CTE overnight field trips as presented.
Madam Chair, I call for a motion to approve the cosmetology, FBLA, and CTE over, overnight field trips as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned, properly second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move to the approval of the minutes for my January eighth and January twenty, twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, meeting as presented.
Can we, um, take them both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the minutes from January the eighth and January the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aff, any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the bills.
I had the honor of checking the bills this month. I found everything looked good to me, so I would like to make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion properly second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The personnel list, is there a motion to approve the personnel list as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel list as presented.
Second.
So, we'll move to the second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, we're down to our Board comments.
Okay, I'm gonna be the first this time.
Hey.
Now, I don't, I'm not, I don't have a lot to, I wanna say, I just wanna tell you, um, Ms. Jones, Penny, congratulations, a shout-out to you and Rose. For having the, um, leading that growth, and also, um, to receive and be recognized by Governor Young, because that is awesome.
Amazing.
And I do wanna say, when it's on my Facebook and I see any information like that, even if it's Rose, or Taro, or Eva, um, Mariah Powellton, always pass it on to people that I know, you know, people who know me, and I always get, you always get good responses, congratulations, awesome job, keep it up. So, keep up the good work, and also to, um, Julius and to, um, Trevon, and, um, Ms. Walton, great job. Thank you.
Any others, any other Board comments?
Um, as for me, again, we received a lot of information, a lot of great information about the direction in which we're going. And I just wanna give kudos to the team for the awesome presentations. Also, I'd like to recognize, um, my student, again, our classified employees, as well as our certified employees. Congratulations on your accomplishments, thank, thank you for what you do for our division. We truly do appreciate it. And as for me, um, you know, I think that there comes a time where it requires us to do some self-reflection. We, we talk about transparency, we talk about, we are a team. And there are times where we need to have those crucial conversations. And I think. And I think that it is, you know, the time is now, that we have a retreat, a work session, or whatever it is, so that we can be better and better serve our students as a division. Um, a lot of things were presented today, both from the citizens' comments to the instruction, to finance. And it requires more than just a conversation, you know, during this time here, during the board, regular board meeting. It requires for us to be able to kind of have those candid conversations about how we move forward. And I think that I hope, or I hope, shall I say, that we have an opportunity to look at our schedules and see what days are available for us to be able to have those type of conversations.
Um, I just wanted to say to Julius Chavis, um, he had wonderful vocals tonight. And, um, he was a great speaker as well. I want to thank you, Ms. Finney, for the gift that you gave us as, um, board appreciation, is much appreciated. Um, Trevon, you are a phenomenal young man. And I just want to congratulate you for being a nominee for the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. Keep up the phenomenal work and keep being a shining star and role model for those to follow you. Um, I want to say congratulations to our Staff of the Month, Ms. Hilton and Ms. Drumgo. Thank you for all that you do for our students. I want to say to Ms. Mariah, your voice was heard tonight. Keep being an advocate for your child. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And usually when a parent comes out to give any type of comments, our superintendent follows back up with a response, um, to you. So you would get that response from, from our superintendent, not from us as the board. But again, thank you for being an advocate for your child. Um, in regards to 4H, Ms. Walton, you've been doing a phenomenal job. I remember first when you came to the county, I used to always say, hey, I want my son to come out. So keep on doing what you're doing. Uh, we greatly appreciate the impact you have on our children in Brunswick County. And Trevon, as I stated, keep on being a shining star in whatever you do. In regards to all of the presentations, I want to thank Dr., um, Dr. Hampton or Ms. Hampton, Dr. Hampton, I apologize about. Dr. Hampton, I want to thank you and your team for a wonderful presentation tonight. Um, I love the, the group instruction models myself. I think that was, that was phenomenal. And also to everyone else who have presented, thank you so much. Thank you for all, all those who came tonight and for your patience. We greatly appreciate you. And I also want to acknowledge, um, there was a student who hit 1,000 points for our girls' basketball team. Um, we just want to congratulate her for, um, hitting that monumental mark. And we just wish our, all of our athletes much success. Thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody's in thank, but one thing I noticed at these meetings, whether it be the students or the teachers or whatever, is the enthusiasm. I love the enthusiasm. I think y'all are an awesome team. You know, different people have different months where you appreciate different people or different students. But I just notice a lot of standouts every month, all year long, and I thank you for what you do.
Well, it's obvi- obvious and evident that you all do like what you do. Um, that not only do you like it, but you love what you do. And that is so appreciated. I see the smiles when you all are giving those presentations and the energy. I mean, it's just there to say that, and then to get, again, to see you all in action and see you all in your environment is a beautiful thing to behold. Um, I say to everybody in the county, advocacy, 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 because this is where we are right now. Our educational system is at a point where we don't know which way it's going. And that's from the higher ups all the way down. But what we do know is it's going to affect our county. We are a Title I division and a lot of our money, we're low income. That's just Brunswick County, that's the truth of the matter. And in knowing that, we have to know that as a community and we have to advocate for what's right for our community. Um, again, there are some of those who sit into, in office and tell us what we gotta have, but they don't tell us how we gotta have it. And they don't tell us where the money's going to come from, where we're gonna get it. I say to you, please advocate to your local board of supervisors, letting them know. Exactly, and it's almost like putting faces to names. Because I can say instructional coach, I can say specialist, I can say the maintenance man. But when I start saying the Rachel Hawkins-Westen or Ms. Austin or, uh, Ms. Bianca, those are actually people that we see at the grocery stores every day. And people who are impacting our students, they're impacting our lives every day. So not only are we advocating for our kids, but we're advocating for our staff. We're advocating for the future of this county. We're advocating for the Grow Your Own program because they think it's just money. But it's money well-spent and well-disseminated. And we're growing our own and we're starting to pour back into our community. Cause a lot of people don't know what we already know. Brunswick County is the garden spot of the world. You just gotta get out there. People gotta realize that this is the place to be. And for those of us who decided that we want to stay here and give back to our community, we still need those fundings for it and we still need the support. So I say again, advocate, advocate, advocate. I heard Dr. Majet say that we were told to go to the Capitol. Well, Dr. Burns and I went to the Capitol. And, and we actually knocked on some doors and something happened, change happened. And it wasn't all of what we wanted to hear, but it was a lot of what we needed to hear. It was a lot about how we are to get those funds. And then still, how we're to advocate for our people. So I can't thank you enough, absolutely, to the parents who came out and who decided to come out. Continue to advocate for your child, continue to be that advocate. Because that's, that's, that's what we're here for. Trevon, I promise you I won't bug you when I see you at TJ Maxx. I'm forever in there waving and taking pictures. He has got to be the hardest working man in Brunswick County. He represents us well and I appreciate that. Thank you all very much. Have a great night. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? All in favor? And Roy, y'all, y'all just love my Roy a little bit, Kansas City laws, but the Eagles won, so.
Go Eagles.